Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors. Evening session, September 16th, 6:30 PM. Record advice will be used during this meeting.
Do you have to pledge allegiance?
Yep.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public comment on agenda items? Seeing that there are none, the minutes of the previous meeting, the board minutes, August 19th, 2021 AM session.
Anybody have any changes or anything to?
Okay, so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 The treasurer's report and authorization to pay bills.
Yeah, I've had a chance to review all the bills and even sign them, and I think Kyle's already signed them as well.
Yep.
Yeah, I have a motion to accept the treasurer's report and authorize staff to pay the bills.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, I abstain from invoice 84650, though.
Which one?
84650.
Moving on to reports. Acceptance of the reports except for the fire companies.
Township manager report?
Yeah, so it'd be appropriate to entertain a motion to accept the reports A through D.
Okay. Chief doesn't want to give his, okay.
Well, actually, I didn't ask that question. Chief, would you like to give yours orally?
It would be the board's pleasure.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept then the township manager's building inspector's report and the township roadmaster's report.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to the East Burnie Line Police Department. Chief?
Item number one, we're still on the COVID mandate right now in the buildings, so everyone here is wearing a mask. Item number two is the most important. As the Board of Supervisors are aware, Downingtown Borough Administration and Police Department operations were severely damaged by the flooding from Ida. The borough suffered enormous loss of equipment and their building operations. Chief Howard Holland reached out to me the day after the storm for any assistance we could give. Chief Holland and I were able to coordinate a complete move of their police operations to the East Burnie Line Police Building. They are now fully operational from our location. There is no immediate timetable for how long this will, they will need assistance, but the estimate is at least six to nine months. Chief Holland and I have worked out most of the logistics in regards to expenses, and Luke and Lisa V have assisted with setting up a tracking account for the reimbursements from the borough. I will keep the board updated as we proceed. Totally, total monthly events for East Burnie Line was 2,307. Investigations completed, 194. There were two criminal arrests, two, three summary arrests, two warrant arrests. Thirteen traffic accidents were investigated, 153 traffic citations were issued, 89 warnings were issued, and 10,475 miles of patrol were logged. That is my report.
Thank you.
Make a motion to accept the chief's report.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to Fire Company Joe.
Thank you. Good evening. The East Burnie Line Fire Company report for the month of August, we had 53 total incidents, 37 fire, 16 medical. We had 21 fire calls in East Burnie Line Township, seven medical, six fire calls in West Burnie Line Township, nine medical, and two in Upper Euclid. We had an average response of 10 personnel. We had three training sessions with an average of 23 personnel. Many of you know the storm took place during this month, and we had six water rescues in East Burnie Line Township. The ladder truck actually had to get two people off of the Little Washington Bridge over there at Little Washington Marshall Road that were stranded on top of the bridge. We also assisted Downingtown Borough with multiple rescues, and also along Creek Road and 282, we were able to assist them. Continue, you can now see substantial growth with the building. Down at the fire station today, they disconnected all the electric to the main building, set up temporary electric, and the tower's starting to go up in the front. So we're finally making some really good progress down there with the building.
Is there a new completion date?
Not yet, George.
No?
No.
Because I know you had some issues with one contract.
Yeah, we're actually looking for March at this point.
March at this point, okay. Any events? Let me just ask, any, like, a pledge or fundraising events towards the building?
No, we don't have anything planned right now. We did take part with the Police Department in the 9/11 ceremony up at the park.
Okay.
And we also were at Brandywine Wallace for their 9/11 ceremony, but nothing fundraising-wise with the building planned right now.
Okay.
Why aren't we hearing the building inspection report, especially the roadmaster's report with all the significant impact to the roadways?
Well, he's coming, Matt, the roadmaster's coming up on the next agenda for the Aspen.
We said just accept it, just accept it.
Well, it's available online, so.
Is this a event to actually announce it to the public if it's on record? What about here?
That's, it's up to our discretion, Matt.
What about the solicitor? Is he present? What's his opinion?
He's actually present on the phone.
Mr. Jonas, what do you have to say about that?
If, Matt, if I could ask you to hold your comment till the, till item 10 on the agenda, which is public comment on non-agenda items?
Please get a response from Mr. Jonas, does he's the solicitor?
Well, I would appreciate that if your comment was at the appropriate time on the agenda, and then I would further ask that public comment is for making public comment, not the cross-examination of members of staff.
Cross-examination, we're departing from procedure. So I'm part of the public, I'm here to point out that you're part of procedure. So are you gonna go with procedure, or are you just gonna delay due?
At this point, Matt, we're gonna continue with our meeting, and then we can adjourn at the end of the meeting. So, is that all right? That way everybody else can consider.
So Mr. Jonas is refusing to comment, or he's not present?
I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, is there, is there a question for me?
I don't know really what the question was as far as whether or not we should be reading the building inspector's report to.
Yeah, it's, for some reason today, the sound is very hard to hear, particularly if somebody's not right next to the microphone.
Right, well, I have, I guess, just as a point of order, Mr. Chairman, we have a question from the audience, and the audience member is seated and not at the microphone, and then, so that's the technical problem, so.
This would not be the, there was, there were two opportunities for the public to comment. One is, as the beginning, as the chairman offered, if there was comment for agenda items and nobody volunteered, so the next time that the public would have the opportunity to comment on a non-agenda item is at the conclusion of the meeting, and that's a comment only, and whoever the question, whoever is making the comment should not necessarily expect to get a response immediately. It's up to the township Board of Supervisors or the staff whether they want to respond at some point during the meeting, but this is not the appropriate time for someone to interrupt the proceedings.
So no, you won't be reading the reports?
Well, we will address it at the end here.
We can just at the end, though.
We'll address your question at the end.
So moving on. Did we, did we accept the approval of the fire company's report? I don't believe so.
Okay. Motion to accept the fire company's report.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to old business, to consider the bid award for Aspen Drive paving. Matt?
Yes, thank you. On Thursday, August 24th, bids were open for our 2021 road paving project. The bid is for repairs and overlay of Aspen Drive and Foxtail Lane in the Marshall Creek Development. There were three bids received. The lowest responsible bidder is DeRocco Brothers Incorporated for $214,259.60. Included is a letter from Mr. Kyle Turner of Cedarville Engineering. I respectfully request the board accept the bid from DeRocco Brothers Incorporated for $214,259.60 for the 2021 road paving project.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Let's move on to new business, accept the resignation of zoning hearing board member. John Carrigan?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have some unfortunate news to deliver, and that is that staff is in receipt of a letter of resignation from zoning hearing board member John Carrigan. John Carrigan has served the zoning hearing board since January of 2016, and his service is greatly appreciated. At this time, I'd ask the board to consider accepting the resignation of Mr. Carrigan.
And it's, when is, when is it effective?
Actually, I believe it would be immediately.
Immediately, okay. Okay. I'll make, I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of John Carrigan from the zoning hearing board.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, let's move on to the consideration of zoning hearing board applicants.
Yeah, so that was the bad news. We're losing the services of a valued volunteer. The good news is that in the June newsletter, the Mile Marker, we solicited volunteers to serve on the zoning hearing board. On the screen before you is a list of the five members of the zoning hearing board effective in January of this year. Our code specifies that we have five members. They serve five-year terms, and their terms are staggered such that one seat is up each year. Our code also specifies that we may have up to two alternates. And so while we had five full members, we never had those two alternates. So in the packet before you are the application materials of two individuals interested in serving on the zoning board. At this time, I'd respectfully ask the board to consider appointing one of the two to fill the term vacated by John Carrigan, the term expiring December 31st, 2025, and consider appointing the other individual as a alternate to the zoning hearing board. I have spoken to both applicants. They attended the last zoning hearing board meeting. Neither has a preference, and probably within the next three months, they will both, if appointed, have an opportunity to fill vacancies on the board.
Is there, I think you had indicated there is a third applicant interested or not?
We have verbally heard from a third applicant. We have not received the appropriate standard application form to include in your packet. Therefore, we have no recommendation to appoint that individual this evening.
Does anybody have any familiarity or has met with these two individuals? Does it really, or does the zoning hearing board, does the chairman familiar with either of these two individuals?
Mr. Doniano is familiar with Nicole.
With who?
Nicole.
Okay.
Ms. Rossi.
Okay.
And Mr. Wegman is familiar with the gentleman.
Do we have any recommendations from them?
They both appeared before the zoning hearing board, and they were approved by the zoning hearing board.
What, both individuals?
Correct.
I'm sorry, what, I didn't hear your question. I was trying to read a form. What we?
I was asking if the, if first of all, if the chairman was familiar with these two applicants, and if there was any recommend, if they were familiar with them, was there any recommendation by the chairman as to what individual
Oh.
they would prefer to put on the board, and, and if they're, if they like both of them, do they want the second then to be an alternate?
He did not specify that he had a preference?
Do you know if he said he was satisfied with both individuals? Okay. So is it a matter, is it a matter for us then to select one of the two to put on the board, and the second as an alternate? I mean, I don't know, I don't know, you know, either individual.
I don't know individual either.
I mean, if I, if the chairman knows, I mean, from my standpoint, if the chairman knows both individuals, and he feels comfortable with both, I would defer to the chairman to say, which one would you like on the board now, and which one do you want as an alternate? Is that something Kyle, you, Jason?
Yeah, I agree.
Would agree? Because I, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't.
You know, does one is, want to serve really on the board more so than the other, et cetera, et cetera? So I would refer to the chairman.
Okay, so.
I mean, I don't know. My colleagues agree.
If I may, getting a quorum at the zoning hearing board has been razor-thin for the last two months here. And so my preference is that at a minimum, both are appointed as alternates. So that they may, they may fill in a quorum. Now, as to which one fills the vacancy, that can be tabled. But since we're able to have two alternates, I would say at a minimum, the board consider appointing both of them as alternates.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept Nicole Rossi and Jason Frank as the two alternatives to the zoning hearing board.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
A good, good solution, Luke.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is accept the resignation of emergency management coordinator.
Right, I feel like this is like happy sad, happy sad, as we work our way down the agenda here. So I'm going to go back to sad and say, I am sorry to report that staff has received a resignation of emergency management coordinator Mark Ferrari, who has served the township for, I think we're probably at two years or a year and a half at least, and I'm greatly appreciative of his service. His note did not indicate that his resignation was effective immediately, and I understand that the fire company, if I'm not speaking out of line, the fire company has a recommendation for the vacancy. Is that fair?
Yeah, if I can speak to it, Mark's resignation is immediate because his job has taken him to New York, so he won't be back and forth in the area as he was. I did speak with him on the phone last evening, and I asked him just that question. He said, you know, as of tonight, when he turns in his resignation, he would be done. Because we have a lot of opportunity to meet different people in the fire service with different backgrounds, we do recommend, and I think that some of you may know him, some of you may not, his resume is in front of you guys. You have a letter of recommendation from the fire chief. Firefighter Ben Surfus is well-versed in emergency management. He's an instructor in the Philadelphia Fire Department on the Hazmat Task Force Unit. He's on the Seepah County Terrorism Unit. He lives on Dilworth Road. He's served our fire department for four years now. He's testing for the captain job in the Philadelphia Fire Department. He's an instructor at both Bucks County and Chester County Fire Academies. I've talked to him personally. The fire chief has talked to him. I believe Luke may have had conversation with the assistant emergency manager, Mr. Nye, in regards to Ben, and we recommend, I recommend him also to fill the term of emergency management coordinator.
Yeah, I think it's worth noting that the township has an emergency management coordinator currently, and also a deputy emergency management coordinator in the form of Bob Nye. And I did speak with Mr. Nye in advance of this agenda item in anticipation of if there was an immediate resignation, he would need to know if his promotion. I wanted to just have no surprises, and so I did have that conversation.
I'm familiar with Ben. I think he'd be a great candidate as well. No other questions? I'll make a motion that we accept Ben Surfus as the new emergency management coordinator effective immediately.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Luke, I should note, I don't know if you're familiar, we'll have to, well, you'll have to turn him into the tournament, make it known to the state, because actually the final approval, which is more a formality, will come from them as appointing him as the township emergency management coordinator.
Okay, if his resume doesn't make the cut, I shudder to think how municipalities locate.
It'll, it'll make the, it's just a formality for the most part.
All right. Thank you.
Is there, is there paraphernalia that he has that needs to be returned?
Yeah, I'll take care of it.
You'll take care of that?
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right. Moving on to public comment on non-agenda items.
Start with Hopewell Road first. Hopewell Road? Somebody here from Hopewell Road? Make sure they state name and address.
How you doing?
Hello, how you doing?
Good.
Good.
Just state your name and address for the record for the secretary.
Loretta Herring, 1169 Hopewell Road.
And Patricia Riding, 1151 Hopewell.
We know that the, we know that the Chester County, was it Chester County Conserva, Conservational District went out to the site, and we found that they were, the builder was in violation of some code and was cited on several violations. We're here to find out if you have an update and what you're doing to make sure that those violations are fixed, and what they plan on doing moving forward to remediate any problems moving forward.
Well, the, Mr. Chairman, would you like me to speak to the latest that I'm aware of?
Yes.
So the, the Chester County Conservation District and the township's engineer, Panoni, made a site visit on the day after the remnants of Ida went through. And I believe the, the notice of violation was dated on the Friday after Ida. And I have no newer information than Friday, September 4th, where the developer was put on notice that there was deficiency with their erosion and sedimentation controls.
They were out there in July, and they had a date of completion of August, the beginning of August, of the violations that they were cited for in July. So we were, Ida was a completely separate issue. We realized that Ida was unprecedented as far as the storm, and we weren't. We knew that Ida would not be looked at as a, as a normal tropical storm and damage from that, but they were cited in July, and they had until the beginning of August to fix those problems. So that's why we're here to find out what you have found.
Unfortunately, I have no information beyond what I've reported there, so I have no newer information than Friday, September 4th.
So, like, I don't, I'm, this is all new to me, but like it said, if they were not, if they had, did not have it fixed at that, at that time, then they were going to be fined for each day that they were not in compliance, like.
That would come through the state, just so you know. That wouldn't come through the township. So they, they wouldn't necessarily tell us if they're fining the builder.
So all of that paperwork goes to the state that, that they have?
Well, or the county first, I'm sorry, and then it goes to the state.
Okay. So what role do you have? I'm thinking as, as the township, you would have some interest in making sure that they are in compliance?
So our township engineers would go out to the site and visit with them when the county called them. So basically, state trumps the county, county trumps the township. So this is the county that is pursuing your issue.
Right, but your engineers are out there, so are they not updating you?
So the engineers are updating the township manager, but it's in a magnitude of 100 different things that come through for the course of the month. So the township engineer, I would assume Luke would be, I'm trying to think of his name, Matt McElum would probably be the one going out there.
Right, he was the one that visited all our homes with Joel, I think his name was, from Chester County Conservation. And again, that was in July. They were cited, excuse me, and they had until August. We just want to know, you know, we're now in the middle, middle of September, so it's over a month since they've had that due date of getting everything fixed.
Again, I'm sorry to report, I don't have any further update. The, as, as Supervisor Scribner alluded to, erosion and sedimentation controls is an area of overlap between the Chester County Conservation District, the State's Department of Environmental Protection, and the municipality. So on projects of certain sizes, the, they, they work with, the developer will work with the Chester County Soil Conservation District. And any weight that they can bring to put pressure on the developer to correct the issues is far superior to what the township could do. So that's, so, that's.
So once they became involved, then it is, now becomes their responsibility to make sure that, that they are meeting the guidelines that were set forth?
Yes.
Yes, they're supposed to be, they're supposed to be sharing weekly and after runoff event spec reports, you know, each week to, to the, to the department, to DP, to the Chester County Conservatory, to Joe Sefranska. Joe Sefranca. So, I mean, maybe, you know, if you want to do like, you'd probably have to fill out a right-to-no request to be included on that course.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. You can fill out a right-to-no request to have that, those weekly reports forwarded to you as well.
I guess the question I have is that, who approved the building in the beginning of that whole development? Was it this, this board that approved it?
No, this was, I think, what, 12, 13 years ago, 14 years ago, through a settlement, through a lawsuit, through a settlement. It was the Dowland Ford Station.
Right, so the, the original developer was.
Shirock?
Shirock Brothers and Kraft, I believe, and it was about 2003. The plan was denied, and then it was challenged in court, and then the plan was adopted through a settlement agreement.
Who denied it?
Well, in order, I, I'm making an assumption here. I'm making an assumption that the, the plan was denied by the Board of Supervisors at that time. Which.
Yeah, you know, you can understand our point. We feel like we're just being pointed in a million different directions. We've contacted the Chester County Conservational District. We've reached out to Panoni. All of our communications has been copied to you, has been copied everywhere. We're not getting an update.
Right, I, I think where, so you have observations about erosion and sedimentation controls failing. The township responds by sending our engineer out who verifies your observations. The erosion and sedimentation controls are not functioning properly. The question I think that you have for me right now is, when does this result in sanctions on the developer to compel them to fix it? And that is the answer I don't know the question, the answer to, because it's, quite honestly, it's, it's not within, it's not within my control.
There was a Panani that we go to to get answers?
It would be the Soil and Water Conservation District, the Soil Conservation District, the Chester County Conservation District.
I was just here to ask them, what is the, you know, what are, what is your, you know, when you provide someone the notice of violation, and what is their time limit to be able to correct it?
Well, that's what I'm saying, like, the last.
It doesn't say on their, on this report saying they are in violation, just says, failure to take corrective actions to resolve violations may result in administrative, civil, and/or criminal penalties being instituted. civil and/or criminal penalties being instituted by DEP with up to $10,000 a day, daily fines, but doesn't say it has to be completed by this date. 10 days, 30 days, it doesn't say in here.
It had a date.
One of them said they had like 10 days to make this, these.
We forwarded everything to you guys as well, when we got it from the Conservational District. Like I said, they were out in July, they did an inspection, the builders were cited for violations, and the district, Conservational District, and I guess Panoni, had given them up until the beginning of August to comply. We're here just to find out where everything is. So I guess my next question is, if this panel is unable to give us any answers, is there any point of even us coming back to another meeting?
So once the conservation people got involved, then it becomes them and not, like, I don't know, you guys were kind of.
We're like, they're basically like the, so to speak, the, the local officials here, and this is a county program that, you know, county basically ordinance the laws that are being, you know, as far as site disturbance, so that's actually not really our jurisdiction. We're supposed to be.
But your engineers are.
Our engineers, because it's local, we're within our township, yeah, and they're being, our engineer fees are being charged to the developer to go back out and do inspections, see if they're complying to the, to the plans, and if they're not, then they get cited from the Chester County Conservatory District, again, with their hand, so.
So there's no communication between the two then?
I would say between the two of who?
Well, the only person that would communicate with, with, with the county would be our
Engineer.
Engineer, which is Panoni.
Right.
Now, remember, you're paying in your taxes to have the county, that's, that's set. That's, we all pay in our taxes to have the county for these programs. When we send out our engineer, we're paying out of township funds, and then we, like, Supervisor Winter was just saying, we build back to the, to the builder when possible. The county, if you look at it, like I said earlier, they, they're going to trump us with, with, you know, their program, and then the state, who started stormwater management and all that in 2014, they're going to have even greater pull than the county. But if you're not getting any, any answers to your questions from our local guys, it doesn't mean that they're not, I mean, remember, we just talked about, we've had two of the biggest out rain, rain events in the, you know, in the last, I think we had six inches and 12 inches in the last two months. So I'm sure they're running ragged right now, and, and it's, and I'm not downplaying your event, but it certainly is probably holding up the pipeline of, of all these questions getting relayed quicker.
It would be if, if the, the due date, it was originally in August, which was way before any of the tropical storms, and ever since August, we have not yet received an update on what was done, or if they were in compliance with their violations.
And the county might have already started sanctioning the builder, and, and just for what that's worth.
When is that dated?
This is day 9/3, so it's at the, you know, so I'm assuming.
Oh, that was just September?
This is, yeah.
See, I didn't get a copy of that. Who's that from?
This is from the Chester County, was it from the DEP? So that's what I mean, if you want to get on the list to be able to receive.
Oh, I've been communicating with Joel for, I email all of you, all of our updates that we get from them, and we did not receive that one.
Okay, can't she just have it?
Yeah, you can have this.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it doesn't have a date.
The other thing, did you try going back, you said you got a letter that said they're in violation and has to be corrected by 8/26. Were you able to call them back up and ask them what was the result? Were things corrected?
No, we figured because Panini was involved with that, with, with that inspection.
Right.
We figured we'd come here because Panini works for you. We figured you would have an update.
Thank you. I'm not sure Panini, Panoni, is, Panoni's not.
Panoni, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Panoni's not making the final decision on this matter, are they?
No.
No. It's the county.
They were part of the inspection.
He's kind of overseeing it, he's on the, I guess Panoni's on the outside, kind of like overseer.
I guess our, our assumption was you guys were working together to make sure that these, that the people in our township are following what was set forth for them, you know.
When there is a complaint, then we, then we pass the complaint on.
I'm sorry.
When there's a complaint, we pass the complaint, you know, we send our engineer out to, to review it, and then we, if there is, we go to the Chester County.
And they're not updating you as well?
Not as, and not as they should. Here's another copy too for you.
Yeah, I would, oh, you go, okay.
But you should be able to get on this list, on the DEP's list, to be able to, any correspondence relating this, as a, as a joint neighbor. They'll actually have to send you everything, instead of you having to, you know, try to get it from us that we don't know.
It was, it was Joe, not Joel.
So we can probably help you get that set up.
All right, well, I'll respond back to Joe. I said Joel, but it's Joe.
Okay.
And if you look at the bottom of that, it does say that there's a follow-up inspection on 10/3/21, so next, on October 3rd.
So why did they give them so many days? Okay.
It looks like they gave them a grace, they gave them a grace period after the deadline date?
They gave them, right, here's your, here's your violations, we're going to come back in 30 days.
Okay.
Jeez, I wish I had that leeway. You know, don't fix something until August 20th, and then when that day comes along, we'll give you another 10 more days, we'll give you another 10 more days. If it was anybody else, we'd be fined.
Well, I, I will personally take responsibility for not sharing that with you. My apologies. That's, that's what I referenced in my comment, as the result of their inspection after the hurricane.
That's the thing, because morally, Joe would, he was always giving us, emailing us this information, we just did not get this late, latest one. But I thank you for a copy.
You're welcome.
And as far as coming back to other meetings, is it, it's kind of pointless, right? We just have to communicate with.
It'd still be nice to, if you maybe copy us too, though, so we, you know, keep us.
And, and Luke is meeting with Panoni tomorrow, so obviously, you know, we get updates, but it's not like he's on the phone with him every day, but tomorrow we'll be.
We, we actually did our public infrastructure damage review today, this morning. So we, we, from, from 9:00 to noon, we just drove around and looked at damage, so. But we did not address the, we were, we were looking at township-owned bridges that had scour damage.
And we understand with Ida, like, when Ida hit, we realized that our, our concerns, that was a storm that was unprecedented, so anything that happened from that storm, we were not considering part of this, because it's, it was a horrible storm. We just wanted to get an update on what was going on.
Well, again, my apologies for not forwarding that document to me. I've, I've had that since the Friday after the storm.
Okay. I guess you can put us on the list for next month, and we'll try to get an update. Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Girl Scout presentation?
Actually, there was a, you will, at your evening session in October, we'll hear from a Gold Award prospective presentation regarding the community park. It was unintentionally added to this agenda, it's actually October agenda.
Okay. All right. And Matt, did you, did you have more, you want to talk about the reports?
Sure.
I mean, you know.
I find it interesting, last time I commented on Chief Cozy not reading his report into the public, you know, supervisors' meeting, and now I'm wondering why the roadmaster in the building report is. And like, since we've had such significant storm impacts on our roads, and Luke just said they drove around from 9:00 o'clock to 12:00 this morning, and it seems like stormwater is a theme that seems to be a common problem in this vicinity. So I'm wondering why, I mean, it seems completely obvious for a roadmaster's report to be read in right after this event we just had. So I'm curious to, not only why it didn't get read in, but why you guys are so against just simply reading the, the data in.
Well, I don't think we've had a damage report until next, two weeks from now, to the next morning meeting. Then we would, you know, it would be in his report. So I mean, as far as his report, I think it's only just the Aspen Drive bids that were put off.
That seems to be a common theme too, just delay, delay, delay. What happened with the $61,000 lake township audit that I believe Mr. Sherbeck and Mr. Winters initiated? We just don't, it's been several years now, we don't have that conclusion either. So it's just a, it's just a constant repeat of coming here and asking for what we're entitled to, and it's an evasion from the board, over and over and over again. And why isn't our solicitor attending either? He gives the impression that he's not present and not available for the public by just remaining on speakerphone and everything. So I know that's a lot to unwrap, but I don't think I'm going to get an answer from anybody.
Well, I mean, I, you know, I personally don't think it's, you know, to read down a list of how many building permits and how many failed inspections, I think that's kind of, you know, in my opinion, a little.
Well, what if a bunch of buildings failed this most recent inspection because of the storm? What if the, who knows what's going on?
Wouldn't have that in the report, though. It would just be a number of failed inspections, it would be six, then it would be seven.
Well, see, it says on the agenda that we're to get a roadmaster's report. So I attended this to listen to the roadmaster's report and comment on it, and the roadmaster's sitting right there. So I'm wondering why we just can't get the roadmaster report?
Because, Matt, we already told you, there was no report right now, only was, the only thing was Aspen Drive. We don't have the damage report.
You accepted it. So if you don't have it, how did you accept it?
What did I tell you earlier? Number one, I'm not going to argue with you, but did I not tell you, wait for the agenda item?
You should watch your inflection with me, first of all. You're here to serve me.
You know what? Matt, put your questions in writing, please, and email to me. Thank you.
Uh, no, thank you.
You, you voiced your opinion, you voiced.
Can I hear from the solicitor, please? Because you don't have, you're a volunteer, you have no application to my civil rights or anything. So Mr. Jonas?
Mr. Jonas, you don't need to answer that. The meeting, we're going to move on, Matt, you, you voiced your comments.
Okay.
So, thank you. Is there any other public comment on non-agenda items?
I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Uh, if you don't mind, can we, sorry, another point of order, can we read the announcement regarding an executive session prior to adjournment?
Okay, it's on the agenda.
Would you like me to read it? I, I'm sorry. All right, I just, I just wanted to announce that an executive session will be held following this meeting regarding pending litigation, and.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.